All right, welcome everybody to our night meetings here. I'll say meetings because we have three meetings that we have to take care of tonight. The first thing we do is we have our annual organization meeting. That takes place, the first meeting, or I guess it's the second meeting in April, but it's after the April elections that we have that organizational meeting. So that'll take us a little time to get through that. And then after that, we have a public hearing on some special assessments that the city is going to place by putting sidewalks in. And then after that, we'll get right into the regular city council meeting. So I'll call the annual organizational meeting to order. We have some oaths of office. These people were just newly elected, or reelected in this case. And those people are Cory Nagel, Paul Hagan, Scott Pachatsky, Dimitri Martin, and Colin Dykstra. Colin's not here right now, but if you would, so those four, if you would just stand up. And I'll let Barb take care of the rest there.
If you could raise your right hand. And then I, speaking. Having been elected to the position of Alderperson for the City of Wapaka, do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and all county and municipal ordinances, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my abilities under the penalties of perjury.
I do.
Thank you. Then you can just sign it. Back to me.
Thank you. Hey, congratulations to all of you. And thank you for your service. Now that we have those people reelected here, we can take roll call. Barb?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra? Paul Hagan?
Here.
Eric Helverson?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Cory Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson? Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Pachatsky?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Eight present, we have a quorum.
Again, under the organizational meeting, our next step then is to approve the agenda for the organizational meeting. So we would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Martin?
Second.
Second by Peterson that we approve the organizational meeting agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Okay, first item then, under the agenda, is the election of the council president. The floor is open for nominations for council president. Dave?
I'd like to nominate Paul Mayo as council president.
All right.
Second.
Are there any other, we don't need a second for that. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll declare the nominations closed. All of those in favor of Paul Mayo being elected our council president for a one-year term, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Paul, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all.
All right, since you named Paul council president, he has some work to do here. So we have some appointments that we have made. Some of these are just appointments that are being renewed. You see those in your packet here, but I'll have Paul go through each one of those. There's certain areas throughout the organizational meeting where he's going to ask for a vote on those. And I'm not sure the rhyme or reason to it, but that's the way we've always done it. So we're going to continue to do it that way.
Thanks, Mayor. As the mayor is saying, these first two nominations, I'll call for a voice vote. The first one is the City Planning Commission. The mayor recommends Henry Velicker as city council member of the City Planning Commission. After hearing this recommendation, I need a motion and a second to approve it.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Nagel, to approve Henry Velicker as a city council member of the City Planning Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Hey, Paul, can I stop you just for a second? I'm sorry. So Paul and I both have this list. Barb does too, of course. We'll make sure that you get this list. So don't worry about writing it down. We'll make sure that you get it. Okay? This is just a formality.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next is the Airport Board. The mayor recommends Alderperson Paul Hagan as a council member for the Airport Board. This time, I need a motion and a second to approve this recommendation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Nagel, and second by Velicker, to approve Paul Hagan as a council member of the Airport Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Now I'll read out a whole bunch of names for different boards and commissions, and at the end, we'll take a motion and a second to approve all of them. First is the Board of Appeals. The mayor recommends Gene Grenley, Jerry Dooman, and Paul Hagan as the alternate. For Library Board, the mayor recommends Cory Nagel, Colin Dykstra, alternate, John Miller, Devon Felte, Julie Iden, John T. Turner, Alton Ross Youth Representative, and Alyssa Forseth as alternate youth representative. Parks and Recreation Board, Eric Olson, Dimitri Martin, Christian Dozier, Noah Kolinsky as youth representative, Alyssa Forseth, youth representative, and Anakin Stern is alternate youth representative. Police and Fire Commission, Colin Dykstra, Don Fisher. Community Development Authority, Shaladi Udoni Horn. Recycling District, Colin Dykstra, Henry Velicker, alternate. Wapaka Area Fire District, Brian Smith, Colin Dykstra. Historic Preservation Commission, Eric Helverson, Kylan Wright as the youth representative. Emergency Management Committee, Ann Coonan, Zach Van Aston, Colin Dykstra, Stacy Ellis, Jake Waller, Pete Crager, Justin Behrens, Aaron Jensen, Josh Werner, Matt Vassar, and Alec Olson, youth representative. Public Engagement Committee, Colin Dykstra, Henry Velicker, Lauren Colbert, Eric Bailey, Aaron Jensen, Rogan, Kenziara, Shelley Marsfeld, Greg Gromen Chair, Brett Odens, Madeline Frank, youth representative, Alec Olson, alternate youth representative. Personnel Committee, Aaron Jensen, Stephanie Rife, Caitlin Weathers, Justin Behrens, Paul Benchwall, Jeff Sommer, Patsy Servie, Jan Popple, Josh Werner, Eric Helverson, and Paul Water and Sewer Utility Board, Scott Pachatsky, Paul Hagan, Dave Peterson, Stephanie Rife, Rob Crowley, Justin Behrens, Nolan Wenberg, youth representative. Inland Waters Committee, Alderperson Dimitri Martin, Alderperson Colin Dykstra, Alderperson Scott Pachatsky, Alan Keeland, Laura Colbert, Levi Ketchum, and Alexander Putrus as youth Weyha Board of Directors, Colin Dykstra. Historical Society, Eric Helverson. Joint Review Board, Dimitri Martin. East Central Planning Commission, Brian Smith, Aaron Jensen, alternate. Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Room Tax Board, Henry Velicker, Aaron Jensen. Wapaka Senior Center Advisory Board, Dave Peterson. Wapaka Area Arts and Cultural Network, Henry Velicker. Friends of Mirror and Shadow Lakes, Dimitri Martin. At this time, I would need a motion and a second to approve all of these recommendations.
Paul, I need to stop you real quick. It's just a formality, but you missed one on the bottom of page three.
I did?
Yeah. Otherwise, you did great.
Oh, all right. Oh, Board of Review. Sorry, Barb. Board of Review, Barb Nowak. At this time, I would need a motion and a second to approve the mayor's recommendations for the boards and commissions I just named off.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Martin, second by Colin, Nagel, to approve the mayor's recommendations to the boards and commissions that I just listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Mayor, back to you.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it. Congratulations to all of those people that are serving on those committees. And again, I want to thank you in advance for the hard work you do on those. All right. I think that's it for the organizational meeting, so we would just need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Peterson that we adjourn the organizational meeting that we're holding tonight, April 15th, 2024, five, 2025. Discussion? Oh, it's adjournment. I'm sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, let's do the public hearing. All right. This is a public hearing. Aaron, you want to go ahead and read what this public hearing is for?
Yeah, I will. And then Stephanie is going to take it when we have it on the agenda. But this public hearing is for special assessment for public improvements for sidewalks. This is something we do annually. It's our annual sidewalk improvement program, and this is for maintenance or pieces of sidewalk that need to be repaired. The city budgets X amount of money out of the general fund each year for this. And then our ordinance states that the other 50% is assessed, special assessed, to the sidewalk, or to the property owner that has the sidewalk adjacent to their property. You can see right there on the public hearing notice, all of the estimated assessments. These are, again, estimated. This is a preliminary hearing tonight, and then we would be looking at a final hearing, and those would be finalized at a later date.
Thanks, Aaron. So at this time, we would ask that anybody that has testimony in favor of these special assessments, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor? Any testimony in favor? Hearing none, we'll take testimony in opposition. Any testimony in opposition?
I did get a public input email in opposition of her assessment. Want anything else?
Nope. I think that's good. Yeah. All right. Maybe you should explain.
Just don't just read it?
Yeah, just go ahead.
The email states, "I am Glenna Peters residing at 444 North Street in Wapaka. I am a single widow trying to make a living here enjoyable. I cannot afford the listed assessment cost of $1,000 and do not need any further new sidewalk repair. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend the scheduled public hearing tonight at 6:00 PM. I do not feel this is a fair price. My neighbor is assessed at only $250, and across the street is only $375. I would feel more comfortable with a $500 assessment to be more reasonable and fair."
Thank you. And obviously, you know, without answering questions that come up here, because that's not what we do. We do base it on the square footage of the distance that has to be replaced, and she must have a larger sidewalk than the ones that she's comparing that to. And you can all see that on your public notice, if you're looking at that. Any other testimony in opposition? Okay, hearing that, we'll close this hearing at 6:16 PM. All right, let's get to the city council meeting. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is April 15th, 2025, and I will call this meeting to order at 6:17 PM. And as always, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, on the nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for Go through some formalities here. Barb, we need you to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you, Barb. And you also want to take a roll for us?
Sure. Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dykstra? Paul Hagan?
Here.
Eric Helverson?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Cory Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson? Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Pachatsky?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Eight ayes, we have a quorum. Eight present.
Thank you, Barb. And then we always do introduction of the department heads that are here tonight. Barb, you want to start that?
Barb Nowak, City Clerk.
Aaron Jensen, City Administrator.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Stephanie Rife, Finance Director.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Pete Crager, Chief of Police.
Thank you. And we do have one other. Josh Warner is always hiding in the back room, but he's our IT guy handling the cameras. Next up is our consent agenda. These are items on the agenda that we take with one motion. If you see any item that's on that consent agenda, council, and you would like to see that move to the regular agenda where we would discuss it and make one motion on that, otherwise, we would just look for approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Hagan, second by Velicker, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Under regular agenda, we have, Barb, you want to take that one? We have one change to the agenda.
Sure. New business, or on the new business, number eight, for the River North street lighting, that can be taken off the agenda, does not need council approval. It went to the City Plan Commission and was approved there, so we didn't need it on the council agenda.
Thanks. With that one change, then, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda. Anybody?
Move to approve.
As amended.
We got a motion by Peterson, second by, I'm sorry, Henry?
Sure.
Velicker, to approve the regular agenda with that one subtraction. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. All right, now we can get to some fun things here. Non-agenda items. We have some presentations tonight, and really, some presentations of appreciation. The first one is a presentation of certificate of appreciation to Liliana Ligel, I hope I'm saying this right, for her services as a youth member on the Parks and Recreation. Is Liliana here? Come on up. So this is a certificate of appreciation for her service as a youth rep on the Parks and Recreation Board, and it's signed by the mayor, myself, and our council president, Paul Mayo. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
You want to say anything? Okay. Turn around. Hold on. Turn around so the cameras can see you, and then you can walk back if you want. Okay, next up, we have a presentation of certificate of appreciation to Lily Lewis for her service as youth member, also on the Parks and Rec Board. Lily? I'm saying that right? Right? Okay. Says the same thing, but I'll say it. This is in recognition of services to the Parks and Recreation Board. Congratulations and thank you very much. Want to say anything? Okay, turn around. Let everybody see it. Okay. It's going to be somebody that's going to take me up on that. Next up is presentation of certificate of appreciation to David Trevitowsky for his service as youth member of the Historic Preservation Commission, the Emergency Management Committee, and also the Public Engagement Committee.
Busy guy.
David, come on up here. How do you find time for school?
Make it work.
Congratulations. I really thank you for that. Say anything? Turn around so everybody can see it.
Great program, and I'm thankful to be part of it.
Okay, and we have a presentation of certificate of appreciation to Derek Trevitowsky for his service as youth member on the Parks and Rec Board. Derek? Is here also? Can you outdo your brother? Is that your brother?
Yeah, he's my twin brother.
Your twin brother?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you outdo him? Congratulations and thank you.
Yeah, I'm pretty thankful for this experience, for being a representative for the Parks and Rec and the community, and for doing some good things.
Okay, next, we have presentation of certificate of appreciation to Hudson Hendrick for his service as youth member of the Airport Board and the Inland Waters Committee. Two committees, Airport Board and Inland Waters. Again, Hudson, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anything you want to say? Turn around and let everybody see you real nice.
Thank you to this city, and to the school, and the council for having a program.
Presentation of certificate of appreciation to Miles Wenberg for his service as a youth member on the Water and Sewer Utility. Miles? This is pretty cool. You guys all showed up. Thank you. Congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm really appreciative of having this opportunity, and it's kind of had a big impact on the life of people.
And then the last one of the youth here, we have presentation of certificate of appreciation to Lucas Soto for his service as youth member on the Historic Preservation Commission and the Emergency Management Committee. And Lucas isn't here. Okay, so I'll give this to Mr. Nagel, and he can get that to him. All right, well, thank you very much. Let's give him one more.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Yeah, Henry, go ahead. Will you indulge me a little bit? You guys may not know this, but you're part of a tradition that's over nearly 25 years long, and we hope that this really has benefited you. I've been involved in it ever since it started, and the council supported it. It's real key to keeping it going, that the staff is engaged on it. Mr. Nagel is our source in the schools to, you know, help grease the skids and make sure we're communicating with you. And we never quite know if this has been a success, or if it really has impacted you. But I hope you come back in 20 years and tell us. You know, maybe you're on the school board, or you're on your church council, or maybe a mayor of your city. So we never know unless you come back and let us know. Thank you, guys. Hanging out with a bunch of old people all the time. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, absolutely.
Older people, oldish people.
As we talk to members, thank you, Henry, let me embellish a little bit on that too, but as we talk to members, adult members that are on that board, they know that at first, when people get, when the youth get on there, they're a little bit shy, not sure what to say, but as it goes on, they feel the value of having the youth participate in that, and that's much appreciated for that. All right, next up, we have a couple of proclamations. I'm going to have Aaron read the Earth Day proclamation, but Laura, you're on deck. You're going to read the Arbor Day proclamation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, on page 97 of your packet, this starts, "In the early 1960s, Senator Gaylord Nelson of Wisconsin began a movement to highlight mounting environmental problems. Earth Day continues to promote environmental awareness and celebrate the limitless possibilities for all people to care for our land, air, rivers, lakes, and oceans. Earth Day is an international phenomenon observed in more than 180 countries spanning every continent. Individuals and communities come together with a unified purpose to address issues such as climate change, species extinction, managing growth, economics, and emerging technology. Whereas the City of Wapaka's lands, waters, air, and other natural resources should be protected and preserved at all costs, this goal of environmental sustainability is the legacy we wish to leave for those who follow us. And whereas the City of Wapaka supports and strengthens its commitment to the environment by working together to protect these natural resources is essential to the continued quality of life of the residents of the Badger State. And whereas the City of Wapaka recognizes the spirit of Earth Day as a global event that celebrates environmental achievements and raises awareness for environmental issues and provides a unique opportunity for people across the state and nation to promote environmental stewardship by setting goals and taking actions to lessen the negative impact on the environment. Now therefore, Mayor Brian Smith, on behalf of the City of Wapaka, does hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2025 as Earth Day, and welcome the support of all residents in our quest to create a clean, green, and healthy Wapaka, dated this 15th day of April 2025."
All right, Aaron, thank you. Couldn't have said it better myself. Thanks. Next up is the Arbor Day proclamation. Laura?
Yes. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Wapaka has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, Brian Smith, Mayor of the City of Wapaka, Wisconsin, does hereby proclaim the 25th of April, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Wapaka, and he urges all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program, and further urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations, dated this day, this 15th day of April, 2025."
Thank you very much, Laura. Thank you very much, Laura. Thanks, and we'll make sure that we place those on file. Next up, we have public input. This is for any item that's not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less. Any public input. Seeing none, we'll move on. We have community and department head reports. We actually have Ashley Buck here tonight for the Wapaka Historical Society. She's the, are you the board president? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Go ahead and introduce yourself. I'm sorry.
No. Thank you for including an update from the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network on your agenda this evening. I am Ashley Buck. I am the president of the Wapaka Historical Society Board of Directors. Thank you for your support of both the society and the network. The Wapaka Historical Society has been a part of the network since the beginning and values the connections, collaborations, and support that the Arts and Culture Network provides. We are proud of the work that the network has accomplished and continues to do in promoting and advocating for the arts and culture in our community. I'm here tonight to provide you with a quick look at what the Wapaka Historical Society has been doing and what we have coming up this summer. The Wapaka Historical Society works closely with not only the community and the arts and cultural organizations, but also the city of Wapaka. We are incredibly thankful for the city's continued support of the Wapaka Historical Society and our mission to preserve the city's history. In the last year, the Wapaka Historical Society has focused on advocating for the preservation of our local history and sharing our community's stories in new ways. We reached more than 800 students in November and December when we partnered with the Wapaka Area Public Library to give school tours during the run of Americans in the Holocaust exhibit. These tours taught students aged 4th grade through high school about our local history during World War II through stories and our collections. We have added new exhibits to both the Holly Center and the Hutchinson House Museum as well. We have also continued our efforts to digitize our collections, most specifically our photograph and archival collections, to assist local research in the schools and research requests we receive around the country. In the last month, we collaborated with the library and city to celebrate the city's 150th anniversary with an outdoor photograph exhibit around the bandstand and a small event this past Saturday. The event will continue to be up through July. We also continue to work with our community partners, including the city of Wapaka, to preserve the Commandant's House at the Wisconsin Veterans Home at King. This project is ongoing and fulfills our mission to preserve not only the history of Wapaka, but also the Chainah Lakes. Looking ahead to this spring and summer, we are looking forward to welcoming the 4th grade students from the Wapaka Learning Center to the Hutchinson House Museum for their annual tours in June. Beginning Memorial Day weekend, we will also open the Hutchinson House Museum and the Depot to the public for our summer hours. As always, we provide tours free of charge and are also willing to schedule tours by appointment. We are also partnering with the Wapaka Community Arts Board to open the Hutchinson House before their summer nights concerts, and will also host a program at the Indian Crossing Casino in September to celebrate their 100th anniversary. Nearly every day, we also receive donations of objects at the Holly Center to tell stories of Wapaka and the Chainah Lakes. Right now, we are nearing 7,000 objects that have been catalogued and recorded in our computer database. There are at least 2,000 objects yet to be catalogued and entered in, a project that continues with the help of staff and volunteers. Through all these efforts, the Wapaka Historical Society works to preserve the history of Wapaka and the Chainah Lakes and the community, and share the history with others. We continue to grow with collections and make them accessible to the community with visitors both online and through displays and presentations throughout our community, and offer free programs throughout the year that are family-friendly and community-minded. We are also actively leading or participating in several community efforts to preserve the Wapaka's and the Chainah Lakes areas' history. We partner with community organizations throughout the year, whether it is for the Winchester Academy Program, a library event, or in leading the network's four-day Yuletide celebration in December. Through these efforts and all that we do at our buildings across the city of Wapaka, we strive to increase people's sense of community and belonging through our shared history and love for Wapaka and the Chainah Lakes. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide this update. The Wapaka Historical Society and the Wapaka Area Arts and Cultural Network are very grateful. We hope you can visit the Wapaka Historical Society at one of our three locations this summer. And thank you again for your support of the Historical Society's mission and showing our community the importance of preserving our community's history. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions before she runs away from us? Well, we thank you for your update. All right, next up, we have the Police Department Annual Report. Pete, you want to do the introduction first and then?
Sure.
Nobody knows him, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's actually the first time I've spoken to council, so I'm happy to have the opportunity. This report was compiled by outgoing chief Brian Ozel, who's now retired, presenting it as Secretary of our Police and Fire Commission, Mr. Schultz. In years past, I've watched him present, and I think he does a phenomenal job in presenting this report to you guys and obviously the public, and I thought it was important to continue that tradition moving forward, and he agreed to do it. So, I don't know how many years you've been on the commission, Mr. Schultz, but I do appreciate your support.
Since you were in 3rd grade.
Probably, yep. Not to date anybody here, it's not my intent, but I am thankful for him, the commission, and obviously everyone's support here moving forward. So, without further ado.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you need my name and address or anything?
Absolutely.
Okay, James Schultz, 1506 Foxfire Court, and as Chief just mentioned, I'm Secretary of the City of Wapaka Police Commission. Greetings to you, Mayor Smith, and Mr. Jensen, and Ms. Noah, council members, and fellow Wapaka citizens. Again, it is my honor and my pleasure to represent the Wapaka Police Department with the report of their doings in 2024. One of the most important things that the department is up to is keeping up with the technology and techniques that make us better, better at responding when we're needed and in the ways that we are needed. If you look through your packet, breaching tools, emergency entrance to cars and buildings, the True Narc can actually read the contents of a package and know if there are drugs in there and what kind of drugs they are without anybody having to handle the drugs. License plate reader will actually photograph license plates, send them through NCIC, and an officer will know if that's a stolen car, a car involved in a crime, or a missing person. We had three high-risk firearms-related calls here in Wapaka last year. That's why we have added a second ballistic shield to offer protection to our officers in high-risk situations. We have a new, more efficient taser that is more effective at a greater range. Again, this allows greater protection for everybody involved. We have a new training room. This is pretty cool. Officer Matt Batt got a notice that we have a pretty much unused room in the basement of the Police Department, and that has become a very efficient training facility. We're actually certifying our officers because a number of our officers are qualified as instructors. So, instead of going out of house or out of town, we have a training facility that goes up to and including firearms training, dry fire firearms, and with the laser technology, this is going to be a real benefit to the department for years to come. Being exposed to death and severe bodily injury, sexual violence, repeated exposure to the details of those kind of events is the actual definition of trauma. And if you're a cop, you're going to see more trauma in any one year than most people will see in their entire lives. For that reason, Wapaka PD contracted with a trauma therapist last year who provided one-on-one sessions with all of our staff, all of our officers, and is available for debriefings and follow-up therapy following high-stress and dangerous situations. Having our officers better take care of themselves increases their ability to take care of other people. Now, the state of Wisconsin requires that a police officer to retain his or her certification has to undergo 24 hours of training every year. Here at Wapaka PD, the average training hours for our officers is 42 hours, significantly more. And we're happy to report that the Department of Justice chips in on that. Right now, we are being reimbursed for some of our training, up to $240 per year, per officer. So, this is one of those areas where this is not coming out of our budget, making it work. One of the things that makes me most proud of the Wapaka Department is the way they are collaborating with local businesses, schools, service groups. We're involved in numerous community events. Actually, it's hard to go anywhere without running into one of our officers, and for that reason, we actually started a community outreach committee last year to organize all of the events that we are taking part in. And I'm not going to explain all of them because we'd be here till late, but Legislative Advocacy Day in Madison, Coffee with a Cop, the Special Olympics Torch Run, the 4th of July Parade, Harvest Fest, Halloween on Main, the Wapaka Lakeman Food Tent, Cops and Bobbers is something new. One of our officers came to us last year and said, hey, they're doing this. We provide a fishing pole and a tackle box, and a cop takes a kid fishing out on Shadow Lake, and afterwards, there's prizes and lunch for everybody. We have a mental health resource guide that nobody had before. This is a complete listing of all of the mental health resources available locally on the county and state level, all in one place with their contact info. One of our officers, Wes Zuby, came up with that and went and got the funding with a grant from the VA and put together enough different organizations that now that guide is available to all law enforcement agencies. And if you look in your packet later, you will see a commendation announcement from the Secretary of the Veterans Affairs Administration commending what our guys did. Another cool one, Officer Durant came up with a CSI class. I mean, that's very popular on TV. So, he used his detective experience to do a class on forensic science and crime scene investigation at summer school. They talked about the law, legal processes, Bill of Rights, spent a lot of time on internet safety, which is huge right now. Sergeant Zuby continues to provide the From First on Scene to Next of Kin Mental Health and Suicide Awareness classes. People from all over the state and outside the state have made it a point to take those classes. Wes has provided the classes numerous times here to the Wapaka schools and was recently asked to be the keynote speaker at the Ruby Awards Ceremony sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. Holidays with Heroes. Some kids are just in a tough place, and our cops took them shopping for themselves or their family for the holidays. Police Lights of Christmas. It's a statewide program. There's a lot of departments involved in this, but here in Wapaka, $1,500 in gift cards, 100 backpacks full of everyday living basics, and for the needy people involved, anything from a $25 hot meal gift card to a whole new wardrobe. We're very, very busy connecting with the people we serve. And I should point out, all of our officers are involved in this all the time voluntarily and on their own time. Because when we're at work, last year, we responded to 211 motor vehicle crashes, conducted 1,378 traffic stops, issued 1,188 tickets, and 1,140 warnings. We investigated 78 assaults, nearly 100 theft complaints, 50 vandalism calls, five sex offenses, and six arrests on porn charges. There were 211 property crimes reported to us last year. And number one, this is something everybody needs to be aware of, the number one property crime in America last year and in Wapaka is scams, fraud, fraudulent scams targeting seniors, online shopping and imposter scams. Cannot be too aware of this. We responded to 72 drug-related incidents, including drug dealing, drug use, drug possession, drug overdoses, and one death by overdose. We have a full-time narcotics officer who's also a member of the Central Wisconsin Drug Task Force, working together with other jurisdictions. He was involved in another 49 investigations that resulted in the seizure of meth, fentanyl, cocaine, numerous other drugs, cash, and firearms. It's not just on TV. I'm afraid it's here too. In 2024, the number of sexual assault investigations went up by over 60%. We have a SWAT team that trains year-round for nonroutine, high-risk situations. Last year, they were deployed to Amherst, where a person barricaded in a house after being involved in shooting a deputy in another part of the state. Again, we trained for this all year long. By the end of the year, we had made 237 arrests for crimes against the citizens of Wapaka. There were no staff changes in 2024. We have the same department on New Year's Eve that we had last year on New Year's Day. That's the first time that's happened since 2018. Next year, if I'm here before you with this report, that will not be the case. We've had some changes, but I'm so happy to say that we are just in a good place. When I first moved to Wapaka more than 50 years ago, one of the first things that became immediately apparent to me was how well the Police Department got along in the community. I mean, you couldn't go anywhere. Everybody knew who the police were, and I think we're at that point again, and we all know we weren't always. But the last part of 2024 was preparing the Police Department for the next chapter, and I'm very happy to report that after only a few months, the feedback that I'm getting out as a commissioner is very positive. The Wapaka Police Department is proud of its service to the Wapaka area. If you have any questions, Chief Craig or I will be happy to answer them for you. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Jim. Comments, council? Anybody?
Thank you.
You're right, he did do an awesome job. Don, go ahead.
It crossed my mind as he was presenting, he does such a great job that throughout the state somehow we're known as one of the worst places to live, and because of the crime and whatnot. But although we've all debunked that about a year, about a month, what, six months ago? I saw this come up again. But we do just such a great job that I think that this is so, like, when you're talking about the fraud and things that are happening, this weird article that keeps popping up is absolutely false, and the Police Department in our community is a terrific, safe place to live. So, maybe your excellent presentation is one of the reasons we get such weird public, it's not, it's a joke, and it turns out it's being a very bad joke, but at any rate, well done, thank you.
Oh, it was a joke? I'm sorry. You've got to start with that. Thanks. Yeah, thank you, Colin, for your comments. Anybody else? I do want to recognize one of the Police and Fire Commissioners that is here tonight for probably another reason, but Don Fisher is also here tonight, so, yeah, thank you. I actually kidded him as I walked by him, I go, that's his job in waiting, so you should be training him, Jim. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the monthly report from the Wapaka Area Fire District. That's, Jake is not here tonight, but that's in your packet, and that's just informational for you. Under New Business. He can't hear, so he'll go ahead and talk along. Next up, under New Business, we have approval to use East Fulton Street for the Saturday's farmer market. I don't know, is Dawn here? Yeah, hey, Dawn. Come on up to the podium. This is Dawn Reith?
Reith.
Reith?
Reith.
I knew I'd say it wrong.
It's okay.
Right? Yeah, speaking to- Yeah, speak into that microphone there and go ahead.
I am the market administrator for the farmer's market, relatively new to this job. I'd first like to thank the council and the city of Wapaka for their support of the farmer's market. When we started it, it was five of us standing out, sitting out in front of the library at 8:00 in the morning trying to sell vegetables and plants or whatever. It is now gone and we have 45 vendors right now signed up to go to the farmer's market and there's more coming if we have space for them. So I'd like to thank you for giving the farmers and others in the community a chance to sell their items to Wapaka County. So, thank you. And I'd like to ask permission to close down Fulton Street starting May 10th through October 25th on Saturdays between 7:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. There's one Saturday in there that we're going to get moved, if this is approved, over to the other side of the street for Arts and Square. But does anybody have any questions that I could, I could answer or try to?
This is no different than you've done last year.
Okay.
I mean, this is, but it has really taken off. It's, if you've been down here on Saturday mornings, it's, it's becoming quite the event. And so you should take some credit for that, but it's, it's pretty cool.
So, thank you.
Yeah. So we would need a motion if you're okay with this, counsel, because we are closing off a public street for part of a time. We would need a motion to approve that.
Move to approve the presented.
Okay, just say move to approve. I'll read it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Sorry. We have a motion by Pachansky, second by, I'm sorry.
Martin.
Martin, that we approve the use of East Fulton Street for the Saturday's Farmer Market and street closures on Saturdays from 7:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., May 10th through October 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Scott, I talked, but I have it in front of me.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Yeah, so, and I still make mistakes, so, yeah. Thank you. Next up, we have license report number 1716, am I right? Okay. Sorry, I got off on a different page. License report number 1716, this is a Class A intoxicating liquor license and Class A fermented malt beverage license for... Okay, good luck. La Tienda Mexican Store LLC at 206 North Main Street. It's Carla Hernandez is the agent. I know Carla's not here tonight. But this is a pretty straightforward request, right?
Yeah, they just purchased the, or not purchased the store, they purchased the store, not the building, from the owners that were previously there. And all the background checks have been done since the report was done. I just got them back yesterday, so.
And there was already a Class A license there before?
Yep.
So it's just a change, really?
Correct. Ownership.
All right, anybody? Any questions?
Move to approve license report number 1716.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by, I'm sorry, who was it? Henry Velker, to approve license report number 1716. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Next up, this is a new ordinance that is being proposed. This is ordinance number 012025. And it's an ordinance repealing and recreating Section 12.02 parent 3 parent K of the municipal code to allow for the issuance of a Class C wine license to retail establishments. And this is the first reading. And I'm gonna, first of all, there is a memo in your packet that Barb put together and I'll let her explain the memo. And then the ordinance, it follows right after that. And we'll, we'll probably read that ordinance tonight yet too. But let's, let's start first of all with Barb just explaining what she has in her memo.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. My memo can be found on page 138. And in the past, the Class C wine license could only be issued to a restaurant in which the sale of alcohol beverages accounted for 50% of the grocery receipts or less. In May of 2024, Wisconsin Act 73 was signed, modifying certain aspects of the state's laws relating to alcohol licensing, particularly focusing on the Class C wine license. Act 73 was introduced, they introduced amendments and new provisions impacting how Class C wine licenses are issued and regulated in the state. The eligible criteria would permit the sale of wine by the glass bottle or other container for consumption on premises. Under the new Wisconsin Act 73, businesses such as restaurants, retail establishments and certain other venues may qualify for this license. And then the act also provides more flexibility for some businesses, including those without a requirement to serve food to customers. In light of that act change, the feedback from local businesses and residents, we revisited it and pretend to amend the existing ordinance to better align with the current trends. And so we are proposing the attached ordinance be adopted to include certain establishments, retail establishments as described in the ordinance to be able to obtain a Class C wine license.
Okay, so that's the background. And then an ordinance was put in place. We're not leading the charge in Wisconsin necessarily. By, by that, I mean, there are other communities that have also done this. And Barb has said, this has been recommended by state. If we do move forward with this, that we do have an ordinance in place with some specific rules and definitions there too. So if you look at the ordinance, which is ordinance 012025, which is on page 139, again, Barb, maybe you just want to read. I think you should read the whole ordinance. I think that, you know, you don't have to read the top part, but just read section, the sections there.
Section two?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, starting with section two. The purpose of this ordinance is to allow for the issuance of a Class C wine license to establishments, including certain retail establishments in the city of Wapaka under specific conditions. This ordinance seeks to promote responsible alcohol service while accommodating a variety of business types within the community. So the definition of a retail establishment shall mean an adult retail business that primarily markets, promotes and conducts sales to adults. The goods may include but are not limited to books, clothing, furniture, novelties or other merchandise for general consumer use. Businesses that primarily target minors or youth, such as candy stores, toy stores or youth-oriented entertainment venues, are not considered to focus on adults and therefore would be ineligible to apply for a Class C wine license. And then section C, or section three, the wine license would be $100 per year or a fraction thereof. A Class C wine license authorizes the retail sale of wine by the glass or in an opened original container for consumption on premise where sold, except provided, except as provided under State Statutes 129.69, a Class C license may be issued to a person qualified under State Statute 125.04 parent 5, except a person acting as an agent for or in the employ of another. A Class C license shall particularly describe the premise for which it is used. That class, the section three was taken from the state statutes. That's what the state statute says for the Class C wine. Section four is the Class C wine license granted to a retail establishment shall be subject to annual renewal, subject to compliance with all applicable regulations, laws and conditions set forward, or set forth in the ordinance and other relevant provisions of the City of Wapaka Municipal Code. And then this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication as according to law.
And remember, the way that we do ordinances in the city of Wapaka, you have a first and a second reading. This is the first reading, so we're not asking, and you can't necessarily take action tonight on this, but this is the first reading. You know, and I'm sorry, Barb and Erin, I know you guys put a lot of work into this. But should sections three also include to make sure that the people that are applying for this know that there has to be a licensed operator on premises?
So that's a good suggestion, Mayor. I think that is covered within the state statutes that are referenced. And I think actually kind of per a recommendation you made earlier, I think it'd be a good idea to attach like a frequently asked questions to this and have that available on the website.
As it's covered, yeah. The hard part about, you know, designating, look in another area, you know, it's, sometimes it makes it a little bit more complicated. But as long as we're addressing that, I appreciate that. And I don't know how you guys are going to vote, to tell you the truth, but I, I just want to make sure this is a clean ordinance. We do, we're not required to have a public hearing. You know, some ordinances were required to have public hearings, some were not. We're not required to have a public hearing. But I do know that we have some individuals here, at least one individual here tonight, that would like to address to address the reason why he believes that this would be a good fit for the city. So I don't know which one of you wants to speak? Okay, hold on here a second. We're not gonna... It's only the two of you? Is that it? Okay, all right. So we'll just go with it. All right.
All right, Mr. Mayor, counsel, good to see you all again this evening. So we'd ask for your support and consideration.
Todd, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Todd Jones, local business owner and chairman of the Wapaka King and In-Between Business Group, who you've heard from before. So we'd ask for your consideration and support of this, this ordinance. As the mayor mentioned, this is not new. We're not, we're not blazing new territory here. Many communities in the surrounding area have a very similar ordinance in place. But this would go a long way for our local businesses to be in a position to offer an adult beverage in certain situations, primarily in events as they're hosting, in their shops and stores, and in other, other situations. So it gives us the ability and the flexibility to do so. And very much, again, appreciate your support and consideration of this ordinance.
Thank you. Thanks, Todd. Don, did he catch everything or you want to add some?
Hello, I'm Don Fisher of 210 South Main Street. I am, I guess, a co-owner of Panache. Debbie was double booked tonight, so. And Debbie has, has been kind of fighting for this for quite some time. And I think, I think it would really help for a lot of the boutiquey and smaller things for their events, just to draw people in. I, we would really appreciate your support, so we look forward to it, so. Thank you.
Thanks. Don, anybody else that wants to speak on that? Okay, again, it's the first reading. We mentioned the question and answer, the Q and A part of this. I mean, it will be attached, or it will be with the ordinance, so people will be able to look at this. But I think, counsel, for you to really fully understand this, I think it's probably a good idea to have Erin go through those Q and As if you're all right tonight. It won't take long.
Thanks, Mayor Smith. And council members, these are questions that came up at our downtown partnership meetings. I think they're followed up in the meeting minute notes and then it's not long left, so I'll start here. How much is an annual license? So per the city code, the cost of this particular annual license is $100 annually. And then if you do, I think, as Barb mentioned in her memo, partial years are prorated. It does run from July 1st to June 30th. Next question, do I need a licensed bartender at all times or just during the times I am selling wine? So state statute does require that a licensed operator or bartender has to be on premise at all times. And again, that's per the State Department of Revenue Regulations. So that'll be something that anyone who takes advantage of this will have to adjust to with their staff that are working there. Next question, are there requirements on where I buy my wine product? Or can I just pick it up at the local grocery store? You can't just pick it up at the local grocery store. The Department of Revenue also requires all wine to be bought from a wholesaler or an established co-op. And then the last one, can I allow minors into the store? Yes, minors are allowed in the store if they are strictly there for the retail component of the store. And those are kind of the four that came up in our discussions. And I'm sure we'll add a few to that, but those, those are the primary ones.
All right, again, this was the first reading. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody?
I guess one.
I do have one. So this is strictly for, and it might be just a definition of retail business? So like professional services, tax accountant, chiropractor or whatnot, would they be eligible? Would they be considered under retail?
They would not. They would not meet the definition of retail business.
Man.
Those would be more like, if you looked at those types that you just said, well, I think you even mentioned the word professional services. Like if you, even if you look at our zoning code and a business use or a land use, that would fall under professional services or some other designation outside of retail.
I think you, if you go back to section 2A of the ordinance, that, that probably answers your question, Eric. But you probably brought that up for another reason?
Plus tax day?
No. Well, as a, as a person that used to own an accounting office, if we were serving drinks on the last day of tax season, it probably would not work out well. So, Paul, go ahead.
I guess I can't when I get my hair cut.
Why not beer in addition to wine?
We are prepared to answer that question, Paul, and I'll let Barb explain it and I'll expand on it if I, if I need to. But Barb?
Well, the state statute says that you can't get, I mean, I can read what it says.
Just explain.
No other business may be conducted on a premise operating under a Class B license or permit unless there's walls and an exit from the outside, an entrance from the outside. There are some exceptions, but none of them are retail. And I, I do have it if you want to see it, but...
Yeah, does that make sense?
We did look into that, too.
Yeah, so we, we thought that question was going to come up. Okay, anybody else? All right, for the last time, I'll tell you, this is the first reading, so you'll see that at the first meeting in May, the second reading of that. All right, any other questions? You guys can't leave. No, I'm just kidding. Thanks. Embarrass them. Nice guy, aren't I? Okay, anything else on that? Let's go to Resolution Number 1574. This is where we had the public hearing before. This is a preliminary resolution declaring intent to level, levy special assessments under municipal police power pursuant to section, state sections statutes, 66.0703. And Stephanie, I think you're prepared, right?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
As Mayor Smith just mentioned, this is a resolution declaring intent for the special assessment for sidewalk replacement program this year and was discussed at the public hearing, which was held right before this council meeting. The amounts shown are estimated amounts for property owner's share. As mentioned in the public hearing, the cost is a 50/50 split between the city and adjacent property owner. The city crews will complete the work and once completed, measurements will be taken at the time and invoiced to the property owners accordingly. Letters were sent out to each of the property owners notifying them on March 31st. Just to add a little bit to this, the property owner does have the option to pay in full at no interest within 30 days. If under $100 and not paid in full, the entire amount will go on the tax roll. If the invoice is between $100 and $500, it may be paid over five years with interest and added to the tax roll. An invoice is over $500 can be paid over eight years. And invoices over $500 can be paid over eight years with interest and added to the tax roll. This is a preliminary resolution for approval, and the final resolution will be brought to council once the work is complete.
All right, so if you approve this tonight, as Stephanie said, you are just approving those preliminary numbers. Roger Hanson, our street department, has told us those numbers usually come in pretty close to what he has there. They don't vary much there. But we do need final numbers on those before you approve the final resolution. So we'd need a motion, if you're okay, to approve resolution number 1574. Anybody? I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Hagan, that we approve resolution number 1574. All in, yeah, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You know what? We need to take a roll call. This is a resolution. I'm sorry. Barb, go ahead.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Halverson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, Stephanie, thank you. Nice job. Next up, resolution number 1575. This is a resolution supporting application to the DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant Programs. And that's Laura. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. So again, a resolution supporting application to the DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant Programs, whereas the city of Opaaca is interested in developing EcoPark with plumbed bathroom facilities and a natural playscape in order to support safe, high-quality outdoor recreation at a public park in need of investment. And whereas financial aid from Knowles Nelson Stewardship Funds and/or federal recreation grant programs administered by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources is required to carry out the project. And whereas the city of Opaaca has the financial capacity to satisfy the match requirements to execute the project, and hereby authorizes the Director of Parks and Recreation to act on behalf of the city of Opaaca to submit an application to the DNR for any financial aid that may be available. Submit reimbursement claims along with necessary supporting documentation within six months of project completion date. Submit signed documents and take necessary action to undertake, direct, and complete the project. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Opaaca supports a grant application to the DNR, will comply with state or federal rules for programs, may perform force account work, will maintain the completed project in an attractive, inviting, and safe manner, will keep the facilities open to the general public during reasonable hours consistent with the type of facility, and will obtain from the DNR or a natural park service approval in writing before any change is made in the use of the project site, adopted by the City Council of the City of Opaaca, Wisconsin, this day of 2025.
All right, thank you. Any questions at all there? Again, we would be looking for a motion to approve this.
Move to approve resolution number 1574.
Second.
Five, sorry, 1575.
Thank you, Henry.
I'll second that.
Motion by Velicker, second by Dykstra, that we approve resolution number 1575. Discussion? If not, Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Halverson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Laura, again. Next up, conditional use permit for 303 South Western Avenue. And Erin, your name's on this one.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. This report can be found on page 143 of your packet. This is a conditional use permit request for Elan Holdings LLC. The applicant is here, Mr. Aaron Hatcher. Aaron, thanks for coming. This has already gone through plan commission. This is for the building that most people in this room would know as the daycare that recently closed south of McDonald's on Western Avenue. It is in the B4 Fulton Street corridor overlay district. It is compliant with zoning, the K through 12 school, or I'm sorry, K through 8, right, Karen? K through 8, thank you. It is compliant with zoning. The use is compliant with our future land use map. Pretty straightforward. The conditions are also pretty straightforward. You'll see that a non-residential site plan review shall be submitted. I can tell you that Mr. Hatcher has already, I believe you have submitted that as of like today or yesterday, right?
Yes, yesterday.
Yep.
Hold on a second here, Erin. Now, if you're gonna ask him questions, can he, do we need him to stand at the podium?
He can do it, yes.
Yeah, would you, Erin? Thank you. We're, you know, we're on TV and radio. We wanna get all this out, and on Facebook, so.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Hatcher, have you submitted a site plan?
We did, yes. Yes, yesterday morning.
Awesome. I thought that came in. We'll review that. The only thing of note on that, and that did come up in the public hearing during the plan commission session, was a neighboring property did express interest, potential concern with how the traffic would flow with drop off of kids and pickup of kids. So that does not, that review does not happen in the conditional use permit. It will happen in the site plan review. So I have not been able to take a look at that yet, but we'll work through that with Mr. Hatcher. The other conditions on this are, again, straightforward. All federal and state requirements need to be met. If the conditional use, or if the use changes outside of a K through 8 grade school, that will require or trigger a new conditional use permit application. And any substantive changes would also require that. So I think that's it. We would be recommending approval. This is, again, coming from plan commission as a recommendation for approval.
And I don't know if you said this, but I just want everybody to make sure. We did have a public hearing on this, and we had some comments in favor of that. I don't think we had any comments against it. One person spoke about, that was kinda maybe, he said he wasn't against it, but he wanted to make sure that we understood there'd be more traffic there and that Erin was aware that traffic could be an issue, so.
Correct.
Right?
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay. Erin, do you have any other comments you wanna make?
Just in general, we had a parent meeting last night. We had, right now, we have about 50 students enrolled. We're anticipating probably two-thirds of them coming to school or actually going through with their enrollment process. So probably looking at about 30, upper 30s, low 40s students at Caris Academy in the fall. Out of those, we are anticipating probably, today, we counted, just in case the number did come up, probably about 15 cars, and so, on a daily basis, morning and afternoon. So not a massive, you know, car line type of thing, probably in and out pretty quickly. But that would be about the number of cars we would anticipate seeing, so.
All right. Anybody else? Any questions?
Question.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
It won't affect my vote at all, but is this part of your previous job, or are you venturing into a new area?
A new area, yes, sir. New endeavor, yes, sir. Caris Academy.
Anybody else?
After the last meeting and the hearing, I did request from the police department to have one of the radar speed things put up on the avenue. I don't know if that tracks traffic count, but at least we get an idea of what the speeds are up there. That one I put up last week.
It does track numbers as well, that speed, so we'll have that information if you want it.
Good. Excellent. Good comment. Anybody else? We'd be looking for a motion to approve this conditional use permit, then.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Eric? Okay. A motion by Halverson, second by Hagan? Sorry, I'm really goofing up today. Hagan, that we approve the conditional use permit for, to Aaron Hatcher at 303 South Western Avenue. Any further discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Eric Halverson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, Erin, good luck. Sorry, guys, I'm working on a, not something good here. Next up, Certified Survey Map, 419 South Harrison Street. Erin, you wanna take this?
Yep, thank you, Mayor Smith. This one is on page 152 of your packet, Council members. This is for a lot split. The current zoning of this parcel is R3 Multiple Family Residential. This is on Harrison Street. It was previously one lot. The applicant is requesting that it gets split into three lots for single-family residential development. The only unique part about this is that you can see on the Certified Survey Map, furthest to the south, you'll see Lot 3, then Lot 2, Lot 1 moving north. It's kind of a hashed out area. That easement would be for ingress and egress for a shared driveway. The reason that that would exist is because there's some topography challenges here. So there'd be one driveway off of South Harrison Street. The only other unique thing is this area is currently not served by sewer. We are talking about it at the Water and Sewer Board level, and I know Justin was looking into design, and actually, in a number of areas in this region. So you may see something coming forward on that. The owner and the applicant is aware and has been in touch with Justin on timing and how that would work if a residential unit was built on any of these, and does plan to hook up to sewer and time it out appropriately. So with that, though, we would, this is also coming forward from plan commission with a recommendation to approve as presented.
All right, any questions? Pretty straightforward here, actually. This part's pretty straightforward. When we look at how to get sewer there, it might be a whole nother issue. But we'll worry about that when that happens. All right. If you're okay with that, then we would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Porczatsky, second by Martin, that we approve Certified Survey Map for 419 South Harrison Street. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. As Barb said before, number 8 has been removed from the agenda. And next up is the wastewater treatment plant slide gate replacement bid award. I've been sitting on pins and needles to hear this one, so let's get her going.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, this one's on page 167 of your packet. This is actually one that Justin started. I kinda helped finish out with Jesse Landry, our wastewater superintendent. They did go out for bid recently, and the bid opening was conducted on March 27th at 2:00 PM. You can see the bid results there. We have Rhodey Brothers, Inc. from Plymouth. That was the low bid at $145,000. You can see number 2 was August Winter &amp; Sons at $151,500. Then you can see the following, 2 Crane Engineering, 175, and Yankee General Contractors at $315,000 is a little bit of an outlier there. It is important to note, this project budget was budgeted at $220,000. So even those top three bids were all well within the budgeted amount. When the bids come in, our staff, and in this case, our wastewater staff, did some due diligence in looking at the bids to make sure that they are recommending the lowest responsive bidder, responsible bidder. And this is, you can see in here, in this case, the staff is recommending August Winter &amp; Sons at $151,500, which is the number 2, the second lowest bidder. Reasons that are mentioned in this memo, you can see the warranty. There's a two-year warranty on both the product and installation compared to the one-year warranty with the low bid. Proven project delivery, August Winter is a strong track worker for completing these projects on time and within budget with minimal change orders, reducing the risk of unexpected cost increases and schedule delays. There's some enhanced insurance coverage, and then they are able to, at least they mentioned, able to get it done in a little bit of an accelerated timeline of 20 weeks compared to the 25 to 31-week timeframe. And given these reasons, the wastewater treatment staff is recommending approval of the contract to August Winter &amp; Sons, Inc. out of Appleton for an amount not to exceed $151,500. The funding from this would come from the sewer utility revenue bonds. The attachments, you can see, are just the RFP and bid tabs and materials submitted. So happy to answer any questions.
Anybody? All right, we'd be looking for a motion to approve this, then.
I'd make a motion to approve the bid for the proved equipment replacement, slide gates, wastewater treatment plant, and to award the bid to, oh, gosh. I'm moving all over. August Winter &amp; Sons of Appleton for the price of $151,500 for the reasons noted in the Director Public Works memo.
Got all that, Barb?
Does that get it? Does that catch it?
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the important parts of that statement.
There we go.
What hung over my mind was, this isn't low bid. Do we have to act on the fact that we're not accepting the low bid?
Hold on a second. So, now we have a motion on the floor, since you made it.
Right.
So I gotta go motion second. So we got a motion by Velicker, second by Peterson, that we approve the bid to August Winters &amp; Sons for an amount not to exceed $151,500. Okay, questions? Comments? Go ahead.
Well, we had one of these a few months ago, and I think the council, when we were talking about it, wanted for the record to say why we are not awarding to the low bidder, or something like that, by memory serves. So I don't know if we have to call out, or if we can just reference the memo and just leave it at that. But that was my motion, referencing the memo.
Okay, Erin, do you wanna answer that?
Yeah, so I think, Erin, a good question. We have done it both ways. I think it's council's preference. I will say that this is something, anytime we're not recommending the low bidder, this is something that we, I do have conversations with our attorney about to make sure it's all within the purview of state statutes and our ability. He confirmed that it was, and just by accepting the second low bid was all the direction he gave.
Thank you. We're expecting that question.
I guess the motion's okay.
Yep, you're good. Yeah, like I said, we were expecting that question, so we did do our due diligence to make sure that we were following state statutes when we were doing this. Okay, any other questions? If not, Barbara, call the roll.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Halverson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have election of canvas report number 1715. Barb?
This, sorry, I didn't think you were gonna call me.
Take your time.
This report can be found on page 207, or 206. And this is just the, from the election, the older persons that were, that won the election. And then on the next page, on page 207, is how many votes they each got for the awards that they represent. We had a 57% turnout for the spring election, which is the highest one for a spring election that we've had. We had over 2,000 voters. That was great.
Okay, so we just need a motion so that we can approve these numbers and place it on file.
Make a motion to approve the canvas report.
1715.
15, thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
You have a second, Colin? Okay, motion by Velicker, second by Dykstra, that we approve the canvas report number 1715. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Motion carried. Okay. Next up, we're going to clear the halls here. You know, and I should have made this probably more clear. We did send out an addendum and you all received that, of course, on, yesterday, we sent out the addendum for a closed session. So we're at that time in the council meeting where we have a motion that we would like to go into closed session with, in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes 19.85 parent 1, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, and more specifically, the hiring of a, of the city administrator. So thank you, guys, for coming.
Yeah, thank you, Dan.
I, I don't know. Okay, so before we go into closed session here, real quick, just so you understand this, we do have a recommendation tonight. We did some interviews. We have picked an individual. He's not in the audience tonight. He's at another community and they actually have their organizational meeting tonight. And I, once we get into closed session, I'll explain why I think it's important that we move forward tonight. We think we really have a good candidate, I'll tell you that much, but once we go into closed session. I'm wondering, we had a core group of interview individuals. We had myself, Henry, Paul Mayo, and Eric, but Eric is, of course, not here tonight. And he's out of state, so he wasn't able to zoom in on that. And then we also had the opportunity for the department heads to meet and interview him, okay? And this was all done under our direction of our IPA, who we hired to find our next candidate. So I want to ask, Pete, I would ask that you stay because you did a background check, so. Council, are, is there, do you think you need to ask any of the department heads any questions once we get into closed session? Or is it okay if I just release them? If you want, I mean, they get paid the same either way. So you think it's important that they stay? One person, anybody, if you don't say anything, I'm just gonna, yes.
I, I would say that, that role is so instrumental with everybody here that if they had something that they wanted to express, that they should stay. But I wouldn't say that they have, I wouldn't force anybody to say it.
I will say that we do have a summary of their comments, if that helps. But again, I think if it, if you feel that you're, they're going to add something to it, there isn't any reason why they can't stay. I, if you're uncomfortable with them staying, which I don't know why you would be, but I think it's probably a good idea if you do stay then, because you all had a chance to meet with them and stuff. This is a little unusual. All right, so we need a motion to go into closed session.
Move to convene into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 parent 1, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, more specifically, the hiring of a city administrator.
We have a motion by Hagan, second by Velicker, that we approve going into closed session. I have to tell you, before, before we close the doors, we have something else that's a little unusual, but we've made sure that it is in closed session, but actually Jay from IPA is actually up on the, going to be up on the screen here. So he's going to be presenting some things tonight that we thought it was important that he was able to do that presentation. So normally, we don't do Zoom or Teams in closed sessions, but we're, we're secure. It's, it's, it's only in here that he'll be on, okay? All in favor of going into closed session, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, say no? Motion carried.